Did we hear from Mike at all?
And I'm not sure.
Did not hear from Mike at all.
But... I was curious as to... him running for council, does that make him ineligible to be on the zoning board?
No, it does not.
Not unless he becomes a council member.
Well, let's change then, because when I was on... I was on the ZBA and I got elected to the city council, and I did not have to resign from the ZBA. I did resign, but I didn't have to.
Hmm, my understanding is that you couldn't.
No.
But, I mean, if that happens, we'll obviously double-check with legal.
Well, because you've got council members on the planning board, so...
So, Councilor Bounds is a liaison, and there's a specific spot in the planning board makeup for that.
He would not be a liaison.
No, he votes. It's specifically in our charter, the makeup of the planning board.
He wouldn't be a liaison.
No.
He would be a member as is now.
Yes, yeah, yeah, so that's different than how Councilor Bounds operates on the planning board.
Yeah.
Thank y'all for all y'all...
Actually, that one we were just talking about, the people aren't here.
It's just 7 o'clock, so we'll see.
It's just 7 o'clock, though.
Is that first? No, okay. They're in the middle.
No, they're in the middle. If we get to the middle.
Looks like your clock needs a little adjusting.
Oh, I don't know why, that's a new one, too. It never stays.
A little bitter.
Speed up during the day for quitting time?
Oh, wouldn't that be nice? Must've been the eclipse today.
Why can't you get into these for Simpson out?
That's the old one.
Oh, this is the old one, 2013.
Yes.
Greetings.
Greetings.
Hey, how you doing, Mike?
Glad you showed.
Yes, indeed.
The... This is it. So, as soon as you're ready, let me know.
I'm ready.
Okay. I'd like to go ahead and open the meeting for the August meeting of the Laconia Zoning Board of Adjustments. Okay? With that being said, I'd like to have a roll call.
Roland Mayhew.
Here.
Michael Foote.
Here.
Steven Boder.
Here.
And I have staff present of Randy Oftlin and myself, Robert Wood.
And not present is Ms. Pearlie, Susan Pearlie, and Ori Gibbs. Okay. Now, before I proceed any further, there's going to be circumstances that will prevail tonight. Okay, so I'm going to make the offer once to everybody that's here for the applications. We only have three members. Three members by state regulations says we have a form. Okay? Now, based on that, you would have to have three, if it's to an approved application, there must be three affirmative votes. Okay? If there's two affirmative votes and one of anything else, then the vote fails. Okay? So, if it's a reject or a denial, then it would also take three affirmative votes to deny something. It just would have to be rehashed out, as one might say. So, I'm going to make the offer. If anybody would like to move their application to next month, you may do so now, because once we start, that option is off the table. So, Mile Hill Road, go. 17 Cedar. Go ahead. Simpson, go ahead. And 822 Weers Boulevard.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that, that record indicates everybody on the agenda wish to go forward with a three-member board. Next on the agenda be the minutes. Do we have any corrections, additions, subtractions? Motion to accept as is?
I move we accept the minutes as written.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, minutes pass. Okay. We have no extensions tonight, so the next is going to public hearings. And the first stop is 341 Mile Hill Road requesting a variance to build a garage within the 25-foot setback. Would the applicant please come forward and introduce yourself for the record and tell us how we may help you?
I am Jeff Mudgeet. I'm just... Owner of the residence on 341 Mile Hill Road.
Okay. So, tell us about what you'd like to do.
Basically, we just want to... We tore down a carport that was there, and we're looking to enclose it. The carport, the floor was in bad condition. The soil was never removed and treated properly with gravel. So, what we're looking to do is just extend it out, basically, three feet further than what the concrete had come out to at the old point. And on the left-hand side of the house, we're extending two feet. So, it's pretty minimal. And the only thing that's an issue is the setback in the front, so...
Is all parts of the garage going to be used for the function of the garage?
Yes.
I see you have a...
Yeah, there's no second floor or anything.
Okay, that second floor, then, is just for storage?
There's no second floor. It's just, basically, it's just a game land right on top of the garage structure. It's nine-foot-high ceiling.
Oh, okay.
Is this current garage... Is this a carport that was there? Or is this represented in front of the driveway here? Was it attached to the house?
It was attached, yes.
So, the impact comes as you're just making a larger sort of impact on the driveway?
Right, right, yeah. It's actually coming forward, like, three feet more than the concrete had been out before in the existing driveway, because it's... The driveway's like 150 feet long.
Right.
Because they had moved the road back when they built the bypass.
So, the extra land that's in there?
State land.
State land?
Well, I mean, city land.
City Laconia?
City land, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, I guess it's city, yeah. I have state on the right and city in the front. And a letter to my left.
Passageway from the garage into the house? Is there a passageway?
There would be a door on the right-hand side of the... There's going to be two garage doors in the front, and then on the right-hand side, as soon as you walk around the corner, there would be a three-foot door, yes. Well, yeah, it's going to be going into the garage, and then there'll be a fire door from the garage into the house.
Okay. Any other questions at this time? There being none, I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate no one from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Therefore, I bring it back to the board for questions. Any further questions?
I don't think I do.
Nope, I went up and looked at it, and I have in my mind...
Okay, just hold on that thought for me. Any closing comments?
No, it's minimal impact, really. It's just, only thing that affects is a couple more feet in the front. That's it.
Thank you. You may have a seat. With that, I'm going to close this to the public, bring it to the board for discussion.
No, no. No, I went up and looked at it last night, and when they moved the road, when they built the bypass, the houses, which you could see before, were near the old road, now are back, and I just don't see that four feet is going to make a big difference, one way or the other. Okay?
I feel the same, that, you know, being as there's land that has been... Because there's been a shift, and it is so far back from the road anyways, I don't think it's going to make an impact. I think it should be fine.
I agree. I think the impact, or the impact on any of the neighbors or surrounding area would be nil to none. So, like to entertain a motion?
I move we accept the... What do I want to say?
Application.
Application of Mr. Mudgeet. The reasons are, variance will not be contrary to public interest because the setbacks will abut city land, which the sole use was granted to our property privately. It will not affect the public. The sole use was attached to Mudgeet property in the 1960s and '70s when the bypass was constructed and Mile Hill was moved. The driveway from our property crosses the sole-use property. Spirit of the ordinance will continue to be observed because it does not encroach upon any other private property. Further, we cannot have the variance for the death of this proposed garage. We will not be able to... If we cannot have the death for the proposed garage, we will not be able to build it because it would be useless as a garage. Substantial justice would be done because the property at 349 Mile Hill Road, which abuts our property, was given a variance to add in addition closer to our budding property line, which allowable at the time. The value of the surrounding properties will not be diminished as we are adding value to our home by building a garage that will be aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood. The footprint of the current carport is not deep enough to be an enclosed garage, so without the variance, which will not affect anyone else's property, we would not be able to build the garage.
Okay, we have motion. Do we have a second?
You have a second?
Okay. Discussion?
I just think that we ought to put in the application number 202017-0018. It's part of the record.
Okay, thank you. Add that to the motion. If that's accepted by the presenter, okay. There be no other discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, enjoy your garage.
Well said.
All said?
Thank you.
They'll be in touch. Now, remember, I might want to make one recommendation. There is a 30-day notice that someone could appeal our decision, so even though they can give you your building permits and stuff, make yourself aware that... I've seen it happen to us in the past, so... Okay? Do you understand what I was trying to say?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Enjoy your garage.
Thank you.
Okay. 2017-0019, 17 Cedar. The request permits to build... Permission to put up a building to work on my home projects and hobbies to be built within the 10-foot setback on the side of the property line. Would the applicant please come forward and introduce yourself for the record and tell us how we might help you?
My name is David Richardson. I'm the resident. I wanted to build up a little hobby shop or workshop behind my house in the area, but I stayed on there. Kind of crowded in my garage, trying to do my projects and stuff, and I wanted to build up a little area back there I can work on my projects when I retire. So, I was hoping I'd be able to do that.
Now, what special conditions do you have that would... Because you're... From the drawings here, it appears that it's going right on the property line if you ever take a foot, and it's a... One might say, a very large building for a hobby shop, so...
I wanted to... I wanted to put in a CNC router table in there. It's a pretty good size, but, you know, practice putting in programs and run stuff like that. I... The location of the building, I talked to my neighbor that's near that, and he's okay with that. I talked with him and his wife, and I've done projects with them before, so...
Now, it appears, if I'm looking at this drawing correctly, you've got two other large buildings on the property other than the residence. What might those be?
I have a garage next to my house, and there's a small shed behind there. I keep my lawn stuff in the shed.
Is this going to be an insulated-type hub?
I was planning on insulating it, yes.
Does it have to be this large? It's a half a house, that's why I'm asking.
It's a 10 by what?
It's a 16 by 24.
16 by 24.
And that's why I was asking, I mean, that's a half a house.
I thought it was eight by 24.
No, it says 16 by 24.
Yes.
In the drawings.
Now, you said when you retire?
Yes.
What kind of work do you do now?
I'm a machinist toolmaker. I've been working with a programming machine to do metalworking, and I wanted, you know, mess around with woodworking and programming the machines to do stuff like that.
So, this is going to be a little machine shop you're going to have?
Well, it's more of woodworking, you know?
CNC tools aren't for woodworking?
No, it's a CNC router table.
Oh.
It's for woodworking, but you program it.
I'm just thinking, that's a very congested area down there. I didn't realize how congested that section of Cedar Street was until I took a look at it yesterday. And in the front of your place, you've got the garage, you've got the house.
Right.
And it's like almost just a little alley to get around to get into the back.
Right.
If that becomes a machine shop, and you have a couple of guys working there...
No, it's just going to be me. It's just for my hobbies and stuff that's... I'm going to move a lot of my stuff from my garage into that because garage's too crowded right now with my woodwork and stuff.
384 square feet of the building. Now, what happens if it was just rotated to the back of the lot? You'd be able to comply with all the setbacks and everything like that?
Well, we just put up some... Built the fence back there, and my wife's done a bunch of decorating in the back, so we kind of... Her and I kind of agreed on where I could put it, if I could get it put there. She'd be okay with it.
Is this building set on a foundation?
I was going to put in sonotubes and put it on that.
I just can't... I don't see the hardship that's pushing it to that area. Okay? And the other thing is, it's large. It's a small house, 384?
Yeah, 348, I think that's what.
384.
384, yep. What's the largest house we can build without pulling a building permit?
150 square feet.
150 square feet, so that's double the minimum.
Well, I should say 149 square feet.
Yes, ma'am.
And that would have to all remain inside?
Right.
Yes, even if you don't need a building permit, it still has to meet setbacks.
Right.
And that's strictly a residential area down there?
I don't know where that... Residential, single-family.
Do we have any other questions at this moment?
Not right off.
With that, I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate no one from the public? Well, before I say that, we did receive the one letter that was passed out of a neighbor at 21 Cedar Street. Looks like they're in support of the building of the... Building. So, if I'm reading it right, it says, looks like it's in support. Okay, so after that, no one else from the public wishes to speak for or against. So, I'll bring it back to the board for questions. Any closing comments?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. With that, I'm going to close it to the public. You may have a seat and bring it to the board for discussion.
I'm going to have a problem with hardship, because I think, you know, and sometimes maybe I'm just looking at a flat plan here instead of standing on the lawn and looking at what the lawn looks like. But it seems like it could be rotated into position. It's still huge, but without needing the variance.
And even if it had some slight slope to the land being built on sonotubes and piers, then that kind of takes that out of the question because it's not going on a slab or anything, so...
And I have a hard time with zero setbacks. I think it just densifies a neighborhood quickly. Can't mow behind the building. Just aggressively on the lawn.
I think there's property unfortunate for the improvements, the property in that portion, but there is, seems to be a fair amount of space to put it, so it wouldn't need any variance whatsoever for that setback.
I have trouble with the size of the building and the limited amount of space in the backyard.
So, all... But if they put it within their... Towards the back of the property, then the size of the building has nothing to do with us.
As long as it fits within the setbacks?
Right.
I have a problem with the use as well, because it's a residential zone, and this looks to me like either a woodworking or a machine shop is going in there.
Not anti-hobby, but I think there is the ability to move it without impacting the setbacks.
And still have the building they wish, and without needing the variance for anything. Okay. Motion?
Application 202012-0019, 17 Cedar Street. I'd make a motion to deny the variance for a setback because of the ability to place the structure within the property boundaries and comply with all the setbacks. Said, in my mind, the variance will be contrary to the public interest just because it densifies the neighborhood so much, moving against the property lines. The spirit of the ordinance is to have the ability to move around the buildings, have some space from your neighbors without having walls, you know, right on it. What's the difference between a wall fence? I don't know that substantial justice is done because he still has the ability to build a building of the size he wants and place it on the property. Does having walls on the... Right on your property line diminish the properties around it? Possibly. And I don't see the unnecessary hardship, little enforcement. I can't get over the hardship because there are different areas to put it on the property. So, thusly.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion of the motion? There being none, all those in favor of the motion? Okay. I apologize, but...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I speak to you briefly about this next application? Just to correct something we talked about?
Yes.
Earlier?
Yes. Going to take a short recess. I'm sorry, I keep cutting you off there.
No, no, just... No, no, just...
If everybody's ready, I'll go ahead and restart the meeting. Okay, I'll bring the meeting back to order. Next on the agenda would be Twenty-Four Simpson Ave. Application number two zero one seven dash zero zero two zero, to build two dormers for light ventilation and storage within the ten-foot of the side setback. Applicant, please come forward.
Yes, good evening, I'm Brian Rillahan, the owner and resident at Twenty-Four Simpson Avenue. This is a reapplication of a variance that was approved in 2013. That particular variance was for three dormers. Two were the ones that we're discussing tonight, one was on the second floor in the bathroom. What happened is, we put that one dormer in, and then we ran into so many construction problems, that the other two dormers did not become a priority in, in rebuilding the house, and we kind of let the application lapse. We, we should've reapplied for it, but we didn't, and then when we went to do the dormers, we realized that that variance was essentially null and void, so we're back tonight. The purpose of those, of those dormers is, we have no basement, so we have no storage, and in rebuilding the house, we had to give up about an eight-by-eight square foot area in the attic for the furnace, because the house, prior to our, you know, reconstructing it, had no furnace, so we lost that square footage. So it's basically for storage, the house as it exists today literally has one closet in one bedroom. As far as impact, the dormers are on the front of the house, so as far as hardship for any of my neighbors, nobody even sees them, and it's my understanding that only one of the dormers is, is a setback off of Simpson Avenue, the other one is, is fine. They do not extend beyond the existing roof line or anything along those lines, so that would be the hardship, and then any impact on my neighbors.
Okay. Question. In the additional notes, you noted that the statement here, the property line in which the Weers Beach Methodist Campground neighbors are non-conforming, the property line runs through the middle of the side porch, which runs parallel to the street. Now, in reference to that, where is the dormer in reference to the street?
It should be like the last page, I mean, the, the street, if, if this is the lake and the house is here, the street is here and the dormers are basically centered on either side of the house looking towards the lake, so Simpson Avenue would be here, and I believe it's, if I'm looking at the lake, it's that particular dormer that's closest to the street.
So it's facing the lake?
Yes, yes. The dormers are looking out at the lake, correct?
Okay. Now, the dormer that's on the street side?
Mm-hmm.
Does, where does that fall in respect to the porch that is... That you stated says the property line runs through. What does that dormer in respect to that lie?
The, the house has a complete wraparound porch. There's one extension of the porch where you enter the house that is right, literally right on the street, that dormer would probably be twelve or fourteen feet off of the edge of that porch, in, inside.
So it's within your property line?
Oh, yes, sir, yeah. Yes, sir.
Thank you for those answers, those were important answers.
Oh, yes.
Because if it would've been...
Oh, no, no.
We wouldn't have been able to address that if it was over the porch.
Oh, I completely understand.
Situation, because we can't grant variances for anything that's not on the property.
Right, and like I say, this, we went through this in 2013, yes.
Probably did, 'cause I, I would've asked probably the, the same questions. Okay. So they're gonna face out? And it's actually not gonna cause anymore, and it's because that section of the building is in the side setback, that any creation on that would also need the same variance. Okay. So the hardship is the building's already there. Okay. Okay. Any other questions of the applicant?
I have one, this, this house sits right on the edge of the water, there's no house below it?
No, sir.
Sweet. Oh, I just, yeah. That's nice. Any other questions at the moment? There being none, I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Like, the record indicate no one else from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, and... I didn't have anything else additional, no other write-in letters or nothing, so...
Not that we have to?
So with that, let the record indicate no one else from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, therefore, I'll bring it back to the board, any additional questions? Questions?
I wasn't on the board three years ago when this one came up, but we had one last year, a similar situation up at Methodist Campground. And it was very similar to this issue here, and we granted that one, the variance.
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is this gonna be, how is this finished behind the dormers in the attic? Is that living area, or is that just storage?
Just storage. Okay. Any other questions? To me, I do, it's, these are just dormer bumpouts?
Yes.
It's not a, like a full dormer, it's just two extensions, X feet wide, X feet wide with windows in them, so you get, you can open them up, get some ventilation into the house, and pretty much gives you that much room to storage, and from what I can understand, they were talking about, they had, appears to be a challenged-sized house, one bedroom, one bath, not one bedroom, one bath, house with one closet, so storage to me sounds like it's had a premium. Any other questions? Any closing comments? There being none, I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion. It seems to me that the hardship here lies in the fact that the building's built back in the day when...
Straight lines weren't straight?
That's correct.
Eighteen seventy-five.
So, uh... The building is what it is, the building itself, the dormers on them are not, are only eight foot wide, five and a half feet tall at its biggest peak, looks like, so... And it's gonna be, remain in the confines of the house, the top of the dormers don't look like it's gonna exceed the peak of the ridge of the current house, so, you know, it's not gonna be any intrusions to anybody behind them, because they wouldn't even see them, so... Any thoughts on it, Roland?
No.
Okay.
Come on, say it.
With that, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve application number two oh two oh one seven dash zero zero two oh, Twenty-Four Simpson Ave, from Brian Rillahan. They're seeking a variance to build dormers on the second, on the top floor of their, or in their attic of the house, and the setbacks, put one of them in a setback. Give me a second here, and I'll get one. Thank you. Said this variance will not be contrary to the public interest, dormers will be built to match the neighboring architecture and keep with the air of the home designs, dormers will not extend beyond the rain line of the roof. In this, the spirit of the ordinance is observed, dormers will be built within all the building codes, understandable, but it also, I think it looks good on the house. Substantial justice is done, in that there'll be allowed more room for storage, and in a small house, that can be, that can be a challenge. Value of the surrounding properties will not be diminished, there will be no blockage of views or anything, and they're not intrusive, and I think it helps with the renovation of the house. Little enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would be a hardship in that the house was already created in there, and it's a fairly small house, no basement, unusable damp crawl space provides no storage space for the home, and having lived down in that area, I can say that's probably pretty true. And that's it. So, anything else?
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, discussion? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Enjoy. Just keep in mind that thirty-day window, and I would start and not let it lapse.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Next application is Eight-Two-Two Weers Boulevard, application number two zero one seven dash zero zero two one. Request for a variance for a ten-foot by twenty-eight-foot deck and two eight-foot by ten-foot balconies will be located within the fifty-foot setback of the water. With applicant, please come forward, introduce yourself for the record and tell us how we may assist you.
Thank you, my name's Chris Woods, it's my dad Bob, he's my cheering section, my wife Terry couldn't make it, but she certainly is here in support. So we bought a house, Eight-Twenty-Two Weers Boulevard, back in June, it's, it was built in nineteen-ten, it needs some work, certainly. One of the things we wanna do is put a deck and two balconies facing the water, the, the edge of the house is already within the fifty-foot buffer zone from the water, it's forty-six and a half feet from the, from the water. We've already had DES approve this application, we've submitted the building permit to the city of Laconia, and they've approved a contingent on, obviously, you guys giving us the variance. There's no other place we can put a deck, it can't go to the, the west side of the house, I'm sorry, the north side of the house, 'cause that would encroach on the neighbors, it can't go on the, the south side of the house, because there's, there's already steps, steps going down to the water that run all the entire length of the house, there's seven trees right there, big pine trees, so the only place that this deck can go, and obviously, we want it facing the water, I mean, I'm not gonna say that we don't, that's the whole idea, is to have this deck going out to the water, we're gonna put the stairs to the side, so that's not gonna encroach on the water anymore, you know, so those will go down to the, to the north, I'm sorry, to the south, part of the, south side of the house. The balconies will come off the, the master bedroom and the, the other front-facing bedroom, there'll be no stairs coming down from that, there'll just be balconies for those two bedrooms. And the, I've talked to both neighbors, I don't know if the, the neighbors to the north submitted in a butters letter in support, they sent one to me that I couldn't open because it was Google Docs and I couldn't get, couldn't figure out how to open Google Docs, but I know they're in support of it, I talked to the, the owner of the Lazy E Motel, who's our neighbor to the south, and they're also in support of it, that's who we bought the property from. It's not gonna encroach on anybody's property, nobody's gonna see it, there's trees lining both edges of the property, so it's not gonna impede anybody's view. And I think that's about it.
Okay.
And it's gonna increase the value of the properties around us, I think, because, I mean, I don't know why it wouldn't, 'cause it's the, it's the least appealing of the properties there, and it's, you know, the plans we have are gonna really beautify the area.
The... Is this gonna replace any decks, or would the existing deck down there still be in place also?
The existing deck, yeah, it, that's down eight feet from the water, so this will come about thirty-six, thirty-six feet from the water, so that, that's, and it's down the slope, so yeah, that, that deck is still going to be staying there, but it's not attached, it's not even close to being attached to the house, that's just kind of a sitting area where we have a, a table, patio chairs and table. Yes, sir? Yes, sir.
Is a new deck going to be over the roof of the existing building?
No, sir. It's coming off of the building, so the building ends here, the water's here. It's coming off 10 feet out, and it's going to, the earth slopes down to the water, obviously, so it'll be on four-by-four posts.
In actuality, doesn't it come 12 feet out in the center area?
Yes, sir, it does, that's, that's the bump out, I called it the viewing area, so yes, it is actually 12 feet in the center, 10 feet on the sides. And they really, the only impact to the earth below is the sonar tubes, it'll be built on sonar tubes.
It's not going to take away any of the parking spaces down there?
No, so there's no parking spaces down there, the parking spaces are above the hill, the house on the hill.
I thought Methodist Campground was crowded, but you're very crowded down there, too.
Oh, boy.
The, certainly the driveway going in is crowded, coming through the Lazy Motel and coming into our property, and then you have the neighbors, there's three units on that property next door. You know, and they usually have eight cars parked there, so yeah, it can get crowded in there.
Then you have the motel, the back of the motel right there, too.
Yes, sir. And this property was rented by the Lazy, they owned this property since 2004 and rented it out that entire time, so it's, it's been a rental property, so it's certainly in need of some work. But we have big plans for it, and this is, this is the start.
Does the planning department have a copy of the state permit?
You know, I didn't look for that, but we, if they have a permit, we will have a copy with the conservation commission. And if you wanted to, you know, if you, if the board...
What condition, if it's so appropriate?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought one of the, I thought I submitted the, something that had their stamp on it or something, from DES, is that what you're, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
I thought it had their stamp on it. Do you mind if I check my...
That's fine. I was just making sure we have one for the record.
If they've applied to DES, and I have no reason to disbelieve the applicant, will definitely have a copy down in the conservation office, and the clerks will have a copy as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I met with Craig Day at DES and submitted everything, he actually helped me do the application, and they approved it within a couple of days.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time? There being none, I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public was to speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate, no one from the public was to speak for or against this application, bring it back to the board for any further questions. Any closing comments?
Please.
With that, I close it to the public, you may have a seat.
Thank you.
And we'll bring it to the board for discussion. I don't see much harm in what it's doing on myself.
I can't see any.
It appears that, like they said, it's going to be either in a side setback or in a front setback, so either way, they'd be here looking for a variance for one or the other, okay? It makes more to me common sense that it would be, if you're going to ask for the variance, you're going to ask for the variance to put the deck in the appropriate place for a deck, which is the view of the lake, that's, okay? There being already constructed stairs and stuff, whatnot, on the south side of the house.
I will say that we looked at the property on our pictometry program, and there's quite a few large trees in that area as well, so there'd be quite a bit of work there worthy to put the deck there, which would involve removing some pretty large...
Which probably wouldn't get DES...
It may be, I mean, I'm thinking more about slope stabilization.
Yeah. That's what I was saying, they probably wouldn't let them cut the trees, because they've been drowning upon stuff like that here over the last couple of years. Any other discussions? Doesn't seem to be out of step, it doesn't seem to be overly large, 12 feet coming out from the house at its point in the center. Seems appropriate, the decks on top are not exceeding out past any forms of the deck itself, so it doesn't look like they're trying to overly embellish the house, as one might say.
It's not a particularly large house, is it?
It's 20, 28 by 32.
28 by 32, yeah. I've been down in here, it's steep.
Living area is 1,512 feet.
Okay. Any other discussion?
No.
Would that like to entertain a motion?
Make a motion to accept application 2020-17-0021, 822 Weir's Boulevard, applicant Chris Woods, they're looking for a variance for setbacks on the water. Being as, I'd look for this, okay, I don't want to put it right here, said...
Here.
Do it.
Or you can just say, as he...
As, okay, as, can do that. Oh, my goodness.
He done well on it, so, you know.
You know, I let the request for variance in Chris's, Mr. Woods' request stand as entered. I would say that this is one of the older properties around, as we were first developing, and this will help bring it in line with what we're seeing on Pogus now, certainly. And anything else?
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, I'd like to add in the fact that we need to have that D...
That's what I wanted to say, yeah.
...D S permit.
Okay.
Approved.
Before.
The current drawings of what they want, and I think that's it. Okay, so we have a motion. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, enjoy your deck.
Thank you, thank you all.
Okay. Other business for the board? Any word on our pending court case that we've had ongoing with the debt?
No, actually.
Is it still active?
I understand it is, I think there was a request for a delay, because I think it's Laura that's handling it, and maybe she had a vacation, so they had to move the date. I could be confusing that with another one, though. So I guess, no, I don't have an update.
Okay.
I can certainly find out for next month, though.
Any other things? That, motion to adjourn?
Will be adjourned.
Second?
Uh, all right, good night. Yip, 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 that's all, folks.
And I want to apologize for dropping a meeting.
That's fine.
Just was in a hectic spot, and I recognized what it was the next day, as I sit here in a meeting.